And the Bridgewater Planning Board is now in session. Before we actually begin, I want to read into the record. The. Instruction from the governor. This is, we read this every session. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. GLC 38, number paragraph 18. And the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted and every member will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. This meeting is being recorded and within 48 hours, we will post a link of the recording on the town's website and or other town's social media page. Following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board are participating remotely. Pat Driscoll, Chair, Jean Greeno, Clerk, Michael McDonald, Stephen Geller, and myself, Ray A. Jemian, Vice Chair. During this meeting, all votes of the board will be taken as roll call votes. The Bridgewater Town staff will also be protesting remotely. Jennifer Burke, Community and Economic Development Director, Elijah Romulus, Assistant Town Planner, Azu Antonero, Town Engineer, Leslie Dorr, Office Administrator. At this time, everyone's mic is muted. The board's mics will be unmuted through the whole meeting and as items appear on the agenda, the project representations, representatives' mics will be unmuted. If the project is a public hearing and allows for public comment, we ask that you use the chat feature to ask your question by listing your name and address and your question. We'll recognize all questions in order. You can also use the raise my hand feature on the participants venue. Unmuted when the chair recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before asking a question. You're on the phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand.
Excuse me, Ray, is Mike here? You read his name.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did. Yes. You know, I read Mike McDonald's name, he is not on. Thank you, Les. Okay, the first. Thing on the agenda is the 500 South Street, the George Mitchell Elementary School, which is a continuation of public hearing. And Elijah, do you want to give us a summary of where we are?
Yes, so following the last hearing. The Mitchell School did appear before the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission did approve the project. Also pending comments from the town engineer regarding stormwater and drainage. And so we are, there was some back and forth between the town engineer and the applicant. And so I will let Mr. Antonero, our town engineer, kind of explain that process.
Thank you, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, as you may recall, I had a draft that were a review correspondence via email. That was discussed over on, at the July 1st public hearing meeting. The, the review comments had about 11 items. Most of them centered on the stormwater management. And then a layout concern, the transition as you leave the buses, leave the school premises, exiting to Bedford Street by way of the senior center. The question was whether they have enough radius to allow for a fire apparatus, namely a ladder truck to be able to navigate that. And they said they did, and they were gonna show us a template demonstrating that. They provided subsequent to the July 1st meeting, this sent an email correspondence of detailing what they will do to address the comments enumerated in my first review report email correspondence. I noted to them that while I agree with some of the methodology that they're using to address the comments, for example, that it will show the groundwater related to the recharge systems. They will show the drainage paths, what we call time of concentration flow paths. Anyway, to make a long story short, they wanted me to confirm that they've addressed the comments, which I couldn't confirm because they needed to be reflected on a set of drawings, which if you recall, at the July 1st meeting, I had asked for a full-size set of drawings to facilitate the review because the content of each drawing sheet is just elaborate and they're extensive, that it did not do a good justice to the review by looking at a computer monitor. And so they sent a set of drawings, which was supposedly revised June 6th, 2020. Keep in mind, the comments that I provided were dated June 29th. So as I looked at the plans, the plans have not addressed any of those comments, they said they will address them, they talked about how they will address them. But those comments have not been addressed or memorialized or reflected on any plan. There is one sheet that has a table of contents, if you will, enumerated what each drawing sheet contains, but that's about it. None of those sheets, the civil engineering set of drawings do not reflect the response to those comments. So I don't see how I can confirm for the board that the comments have been satisfactorily or adequately addressed. I spoke with Jeff Pilat, Pilat, if I'm, apologize if I'm not saying lesson correctly, yesterday and today, and he indicated that they are running the round of calculations to address the hydraulic concerns that I expressed relative to the performance of the drainage pipes, especially when you consider the fact that a lot of the stormwater attenuation is being achieved, at least desired to be achieved through groundwater recharge systems or infiltration systems. And so that engendered a concern for me that if the system surcharged, then we might have, being a public school, we might have water ponding around the catch spaces. And so I wanted them to model their stormwater analysis so that it reflected how the system would actually function in real life. And, and I assume based on my discussion with Jeff, that they, that they are in fact, they were doing that. But I cannot, at this moment, confirm to you that those concerns or comments have been addressed. That's where we are at this time.
Great, thank you. Any comments from the planning, community development, Elijah? Jennifer?
The only thing I can add to what Mr. Antonero said was to confirm that there was a resident that was raising concerns about the turn radius onto Route 18 for the bus traffic. They did present a plan for that, which I'm showing right here, that does in fact show that the turn can be made onto Broad Street, Bedford Street, rather. And they still needed to have the rest of these stormwater concerns that Azu had mentioned addressed. So from our standpoint, I would not suggest closing the hearing, I would suggest, you know, continuing it. We can have the applicant speak on their behalf, but I would suggest the board make a decision tonight.
Thank you. Any, does the applicant want to speak? Anybody? Only once, twice?
Am I unmuted? Hello?
Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, this is Jeffrey Pilat from Samy Otis. I believe we've addressed the comments and what we'll do is resend a hard copy package to Azu for his final review. We've sent over the hydrology as he requested. And the model shows that the hydraulic gradient is not, does not exceed the the structures of the rim structures within the site. So there will be no surcharging. Everything will be contained in the system. And the rest of the comments, I believe, are annotative, which we will be printing out tomorrow and delivering it to Azu. With that, we request that, you know, we could close out tonight and, you know, with the condition of, you know, Azu's final approval.
Anybody else want to speak? Anybody on the board, comments?
Mr. Jamie, can I ask a question? What's your name?
Yes, Pat.
So, Mr. Jamie, and what I'd like to just ask is, I don't know if you can hear me, is how, how will this? If we continue this to August 5th, I think is our next meeting? How will this impact the project? Or will it?
I have no idea.
Is it, is, is that something that Mr. Nolan could answer, is she on the call?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we'll continue on, you know, we have a set schedule, I think we'll continue on with the design and if if the information that's provided is not appropriate and needs to change, we'll just have to make changes. We're on a tight schedule, so, you know, I think we would have the design team continue. Hopefully, the information that's provided tomorrow is satisfy the requests and, you know, if we need to meet again, we'll keep going, but. You know, we have a March 7 submission date to the MSBA, to the state for their review, Damascus Billing Authority. But this shouldn't hold that up. And I hope that there wouldn't be any significant changes.
Shane, I'm sorry, what date was that?
Sorry, so August 7th is when we're gonna wrap up the 90% construction documents, that's actually, that's going to the estimators to do the final cost check on the project on, on August 7th, that actually goes to the state at the end of August after we've done those cost estimates. But I'm hoping that, you know, whatever is submitted tomorrow will be satisfactory and it won't require any, any significant changes that would have an effect on those cost estimates.
Shane, this is Jeff from Samy Otis again, just to comment on that. Based on Azu's comments, we don't anticipate any significant design changes at this time.
My, my concern is that this, this material was requested back in the first meeting of the month. And it's not been presented, and now we're talking about being, in a sense, in a bit of a time span. We would hope that it would have been presented so that we wouldn't be in this situation.
Agreed. We've been coordinating with Azu, making sure that the calculations are acceptable to him.
Well, I'm, I can't speak for the board, I feel that we should put this, continue the hearing to the first meeting in August and that all the material at that point should be presented and approved by the town engineer prior to the meeting so that we can wrap it up at that time.
So, so man, if I heard everybody correctly, if we do continue this to the 5th, it will not hurt this schedule whatsoever, because you're gonna continue with your drawings. You're gonna make sure that everything's done by August 7th, was it? You're going out for pricing?
Yeah.
So the, you know, fortunate part is that nothing was submitted for Azu to approve. And by putting this vote off to the 5th is not gonna hurt your schedule at all. But I do have one question, you know, Mr. Antonero talked about a fire truck turning radius. And you showed us a school bus turning onto the 18.
That was a request from, I believe, one of the abutters.
And what was the fight, what was the fire truck request, or was it?
We can issue that as well. We can forward that sketch as well. I don't think it's been forwarded to the board at this time. But it's included in the hard copy set.
Okay.
I mean, I would just say that as, as the architect, there's, there's no changes to the intersection, Wally Kruger to Route 18. So if there's a, I don't know, the fire truck will work, but if it doesn't work now, it's, you know, we're not making any changes.
No, 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 the, let's back up here. You addressed the concern with the bus at intersection of Wally Kruger Way and Port Street. Mike relating to the fire apparatus. At the new location where you're transitioning from the school to the drive by the senior center, that is not an existing access way. And that, to me, based on my cursory review last time, is pretty tight. And so that is not reflected on this sketch that addresses the concern by the abada for the intersection of Wally Kruger Way and Bedford Street.
Correct.
New section is not existing, that's a proposed transition and access from the school by the way off the senior center. So that is our, to Mr. Geller's question, that is the intersection that I commented on, that has not been demonstrated, that can in fact handle access by a fire truck.
We will show that in the hard copy status.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, Shane Nolan. Yeah, yeah, just, so, so, you know, we, and you've been at some of those meetings too, we have been been reviewing the design with the fire department through, throughout the process, we had another review with them this morning with police and fire. So we certainly get the documents to demonstrate that, but the fire department has reviewed all these and they're happy with the, the access around the building and coming into the property from South Street. We've also spoken to them about coming in from, from Wally Kruger Way in an emergency situation. So they haven't voiced any concerns.
That's well, that's well and good, Mr. Nolan. But without due respect, the fire department does not look at geometric design of access way.
Understood, just, just pointing out that they have reviewed, reviewed the design.
I understand, but that's not the function of the fire department to determine whether geometric design meets ASHTO or ITE geometric requirements. They look at it as, okay, we have two points of access, we have fire hydrant, we have fire protection. The geometric design of those ways and its review rests with the town engineer.
Understood, we'll get you that information.
Anybody else? Board members, public? All right, I will accept the motion to continue this hearing until the first meeting in August, which I believe is August 5th.
I'll make a motion to continue the Mitchell Elementary School to August 5th at 6:30.
There a second? Discussion? I would just like to say one thing myself, and that is that it seems that the reason why this has not been approved tonight is the lack of information that was submitted. If the, if we run into the same situation on August 5th, I will vote no on this because of the fact that we still have more information coming in. So I just want to make sure that the developer understands that, that they have to get everything in a timely fashion so that it is reviewed by town engineer so that we can vote on actual data and not what we think is gonna be the right and what is wrong. All right, anybody else? Hey, I have to take a roll call vote here. Driscoll?
Yes.
Ms. Grigiana, Grigino?
Grigino, yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. Just.
Michael, Michael.
I'm here.
Oh, you're in, Michael, okay.
I'm voting.
Yeah, I'm not sure whatever I should, I'll just abstain on that since it was unanimous anyways.
Okay. All right, motion passes, so the next meeting, the public hearing for 500 South Street is continued to August 5th. Next on the agenda is 232 Beach Street, Quail Hollow LLC. Mr. Romulus, you want to give us an update on that?
Just interrupt you, you on the board for a minute, Mr. Jamie?
Pardon me?
Could I just interrupt you for a minute, Mr. Jamie?
By all means.
I'm, I'm gonna sign off just due to a prior commitment, so I just want to say, you know, thanks for running the meeting and everybody have a good night.
I'm sure you have a very important important place to go.
Thank you.
Romulus?
Yes. So we had an application for a Form A in our plan at 232 Beach Street by Quail Hollow LLC. The plan splits map 31, Lot 1 into four parcels as is shown on the screen. Three of those parcels are buildable, one is not, and the one that is not buildable is Lot 4, which has been indicated on the plan. And so the, in our plan does meet the lot size and the frontage requirements for the residential AB zoning district. And so because it does meet the plans and they do label the one lot that is non-conforming as a non-buildable lot, I would suggest that the board endorse the plans.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the board? Mr. Antonero, you want to make any comment on it?
No, Mr. Chairman, only that of the the endorsement, I will recommend that that the building department be alerted to the fact that Lot Number 4, it's not a building lot. Because if they were to file a building permit application, they could have claimed, because usually for because that meets the retreat lot requirement. For a retreat lot, you need only 30 feet of frontage. And they're showing 60 feet of frontage. The way the zoning bylaw is currently written says that a special permit will have to be obtained first for a retreat lot and then a Form A submitted to the planning board for endorsement. So I just want to make sure that that we can, and could be communicated to the building department that the board has endorsed the plan with the proviso that Lot 4 not be considered an approved retreat lot for the purposes of building construction.
I believe it does say not a buildable lot on the plan.
Right, but what happens, what happens is, if somebody wanted, when they go to file for a building permit, for example, for Lot Number 3, then, but maybe the form A, they will just show Lot 3 by itself. Something can easily happen with that Lot 4. Right, because even though you showed on a plan, unless that is an actual instrument enforcing that, the plan does not carry an enforceable weight, if you will.
Let's step back, Mr. Antonero, what, what exactly, what kind of wording would you want in terms of the motion?
We have to be careful because the board cannot condition A and R plans, so we have to be careful.
No, it's not, you're not conditioning, as I said, to the building department that this endorsement, it's not an endorsement for the purposes of a retreat lot. For that Lot Number 4, it simply affirms that non-buildability requirement. Because in, in reality, Jen, for example, if I say that Lot Number 1 is to be conveyed to Ray A. Jemian, unless that is an instrument conveying that to Ray A. Jemian, it doesn't matter what, what you put on the plan. That's the point I'm making.
I understand, but if you, if you tried to come in with a building, for a building permit on Lot 4, the building inspector would ask where the special permit was creating the retreat lot, and he wouldn't have one.
Okay.
I'm not saying we can't let, make Steve aware of the situation, I'm just letting you know that the plan is not a build, he has no special permit creating a retreat lot. So it not, I don't think it would slip through the cracks at this point.
Okay, that's all, that, that's the, that is the term trying to avoid, that has slipped through the cracks.
Okay.
Any other members want to speak to this?
Mr. Jamie, and just so, just to kind of sum up that, the board can vote to endorse and procedurally, the planning board staff, we can communicate that to the building department.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear everything, Elijah.
So the board can endorse it and, and the planning board staffing, myself and Mr. Thor, we can communicate that issue that Azu, Mr. Antonero had brought up, we can communicate that to the building department.
Okay. Okay. Your motion?
Yeah, I'm thinking most to approve the A and R.
Motion made by Mr. McDonald to approve the A and Rs, or a second?
Second.
Motion made by, second made by Geller? Any discussion? Okay, we have to take a roll call vote to approve this. Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Ms. Corino?
Yes.
And I vote yes, thank you. Next is Crimson Heights, it's a bond calculation, lot release. Mr. Romulus, recommendation here?
Yes, so the applicant has asked for a road bond calculation and a release of lots. I, there was a memo that was circulated by Mr. Antonero that explained the, that if there is a 50% contingency, which is included in the road bond calculation, that there wouldn't be a need to hold back any lots, the contingency effectively covers the the need to hold back a lot. And so with that clarification, I would suggest that the board calculate the bond and set it at what the highway superintendent has calculated at $116,620.
And I think, and what you're also saying is, there's no need to hold back a lot, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Any comments from the board, or Mr. Antonero, any comment?
No, Mr. Romulus has very well stated my comments, my prior comments, and I think I think we would rather have the funds the funds to address any deficiencies rather than being in a business of, uh, securing a lot and, uh, you really cannot readily monetize that lot anywhere. So I think that this is a better vehicle for us to, um, secure, uh, any, uh, work that needs to be done.
Okay, thank you. Accept the motion?
I like a motion to accept the road bond calculation for a hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. As presented to the board tonight.
Motion made of Mr. Geller is your second?
I'll second it.
Motion seconded, Miss Corrino. Any discussion? Okay, we have to take a roll call vote to approve this. Um, Miss Corrino?
Yes.
Miss McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. Done with that. I believe the only other thing on the agenda is, or other things, is the minutes to be approved for six seventeen, two thousand and twenty. Are we, have we read all the minutes?
Right. At all the minutes, I just have less, um, corrections.
Wait, I didn't get that.
capital and spelling.
So we're okay?
I think so.
Okay, make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from July first and June. What was it? Sixteen?
Seventeen.
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 Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Geller. Um, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, uh, Miss Corrino?
Yes.
Miss McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you. Any, uh, reports from committees, any?
Excuse me, Ray.
Yes.
Can we go back to Crimson Heights for a moment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, do you think it's appropriate to have somebody make a motion that once that road bond of a hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and forty dollars is received, that, um, you will execute the covenant release on the four lots and we will hold that covenant release until the money's received so we don't, um, you know, extend the release on those lots? Or do you want to just wait till the August fifth meeting and hopefully we have the bond by then?
Well, not to, the developer, I don't believe, asked for a lot release, did he?
I don't know. I just assumed that's what, it says bond calculation and lot release request on the agenda.
Wait a minute, so? What are we saying here?
So, uh, so what you're saying, Les, is I can modify my?
No, just somebody else can make a separate motion that upon receipt of that bond, that, don't, they'll release lots, I think it's one through four.
I think that, uh, whether it's necessary or not, it's fair to do ahead, go ahead and do that. Is there a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to release, uh, the, uh, the requested lots.
Motion made of Miss McDonald's, her second?
I'll second that. And just, Michael, that's with the caviar that, um,
With the receipt of that cash.
With the receipt of the cash bond, correct. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You made the seconded. Um, any discussion? Roll call vote, Jean?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything, uh, I guess I'm not sure we got anything. Any, uh, committee reports? Are you on the director's report?
Nothing.
Okay.
I have a town engineer's report.
Not on the agenda, no.
Okay, well, well, that's, uh, that's some, that's our report, not.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just joking.
Uh, uh, yeah, uh, my report is that there were missed, uh, uh, that a memo be sent to, uh, Mr. Driscoll that, uh, how short a meeting can be, can be.
No, I don't think you want to change.
No, Ray doesn't want that job permanent right now.
Did it enough. Somebody else. All right, take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second to the motion to adjourn?
I'll say it.
It takes time, eh? Um, okay, roll call vote again, Jean?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
I'm, yes, awesome. See you guys. Thank you.